So we'll call to order the January 9th meeting of the Planning Commission of the Town of Los Gatos, ask the staff to do the roll call.
Commissioner Birch.
Present.
Commissioner Seauk.
Present.
Commissioner Bujwa.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Acting Chair Erickson.
Here.
We would like to acknowledge that we have a terrific new commissioner joining us for the first time tonight, Kinder Birch, and we would like for all the members in, all the members of the public in attendance, and the staff and the members of the commission to stand with me, and let our new commissioner lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'd like to afford Commissioner Birch an opportunity to say anything that she would like to at this time.
I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve on this commission, and I'm very excited for what we'll accomplish together over the next four years.
Thank you, and welcome again. So we have minutes from the meeting of December 12th that were distributed to the commission. Are there any additions, corrections, or the interim chair would entertain a motion for adoption? Commissioner Seauk.
I move to approve minutes from December 12th, 2012.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Seauk, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Just for the record, since we do have a new commissioner who would not have been present on the 12th, I need to clarify whether that was intended to be an abstention, or whether you had an opportunity to review the record and the DVD for that night to be able to participate this evening.
I did not, so I abstained from that vote.
That would be our recommendation.
Let the record show, six votes and one abstention. We have no written communications tonight, and no requested continuances. The members of the commission serve on a variety of subcommittees and special, special ad hoc committees. Are there reports from any of those from commissioners? None tonight. We, as with all public meetings in the town, afford the members of the public an opportunity to participate in two ways at the Planning Commission meeting. One is what is called verbal communications, which is, affords the members of the public the opportunity to speak for three minutes on any, up to three minutes on any item that is not on the agenda. The second way, the second opportunity to participate is during the public portion of a public hearing of an item on the agenda. So in either, in either or both of those cases, we ask that people identify themselves and fill out a card that sits behind the, the seats in the chamber, and, and identify themselves, and we'll call upon them. So, do we have any member of the public who would like to speak to us on any item that's not on the agenda? Apparently not. So, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for an architectural, architectural site application, S-12062, which is requesting approval to demolish an existing single-family residence at 16785 Placer Oaks Road. So, we would ask the staff, do they have highlights from their staff report, or anything to add to the material which has been distributed to the commission?
I do have some highlights for you. The proposed project is the first residential property on the north side of Placer Oaks, just west of Los Gatos Boulevard. It is surrounded by single-family residential, multifamily residential, office, as well as the approved mixed-use development at the old Ford dealership. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing single-story residence and to construct a new two-story residence. The proposal would create the largest residence in the immediate neighborhood. As previously mentioned, the property is located in a difficult location for comparison purposes, and while the residence is significantly larger than any other residence in the immediate neighborhood, it is also the largest lot, and would have an FAR similar to the residences in the area. Based on the size of the residence and some concerns regarding the massing of the residence, staff is recommending the commission remand the application to the DRC for a redesign with specific direction. While staff has not received any correspondence from the neighbors, staff did speak with the neighbor to the west of the property over the phone, and they have some concerns regarding the size and location of the windows adjacent to their residence. Upon further review of the plans, two of the four existing windows are currently clear-story windows, and staff would suggest if the commission were to approve the application tonight, to incorporate a condition that all the windows along the second-story west elevation be clear-story windows. That completes what I have for you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Are there questions for the staff at this time? Commissioner Bujwa.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. I was wondering if you could just expand a little bit on how this came to Planning Commission. So, it went to DRC, it did not go to DRC, so it was just at staff, and staff recommended some changes, and he said, it says in the staff report that the applicant does not intend to make additional modifications to the plan to meet staff concerns, and so, for those reasons, it was sent directly here. Can you maybe just give me a little bit of the nature of that, back and forth with the applicant?
Correct. Staff has a policy based on previous direction from the Planning Commission and the council that we not approve the largest residence by floor area ratio or by size. As a result, this one automatically went to you. There were some other concerns as far as the massing, and as far as how well-integrated the direction from the consultants was incorporated.
If I could follow up on that, but, I guess, what I took away from the staff report is that there were recommendations made by staff to the applicant, and they just said, "No, we're not going to make any additional changes." Is that, is that correct?
In regards to the size of the house, the applicant did their best to follow the direction from the consultants, and what you have before you is, is that result. There were several things that staff pointed out as far as areas that we do not feel that they are completely addressed, but since staff was recommending remand, we did not have them go and make additional modifications.
Okay, so what we have, the plans we have, is the first cut at the revisions to address the consulting architect's plans, but he did not comment on this revised set?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Right, thank you. My question is, on the consulting architect's August 22nd review on page three, we have an illustration of homes on that, on that same side as this proposed home, and then the size, and then the homes across the street. So, can you, can you tell me what this, the height is of, of the homes across the street? I can't see it on here.
The homes on the Ford development, the approved PD plans show between 26 and 28 feet in height.
26 and 28. Okay, so we don't know exactly, and then the homes to the, if you're facing the proposed home, the homes to the left would be at what height? Do you know that? It's probably in here, I've forgotten it.
That information is not provided. That information is not provided.
Of his report, that the lines, the parallel lines he's drawn to the street reflect the height difference between the other two-story homes in the neighborhood?
As provided by the applicant, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
I just have a question of clarification. In the documents that we received, they talked about a three-car garage, and the cover letter was also a three-car garage. In the drawings that are up behind us this evening, it says a two-car garage, and I'm just wondering if you could clarify if it's a three or a two?
It's two from the street, but there is a tandem space as well in the back, so they're qualifying it as a three-car garage, while what you see from the street is only a two-car garage.
And then, what I see on the plans is a depth of approximately 36 feet, is that correct? It's not on this, I couldn't quite figure it out from the plans we received, I was just looking on the wall, trying to measure it. I was just thinking about tandem parking and the depth of the garage.
Correct. It would not meet, if you were to, to do two full car spaces, it wouldn't meet the requirement of the town, but the town only requires two parking spaces, so, they're calling it a three-car garage. Staff is qualifying it as a two-car garage, and additional square footage.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from, at this time, from the staff? Commissioner O'Donnell.
This is more of a clarification, I may have misunderstood you. There are two letters in our file, supporting the project, which I took to be neighbors. So, you, a moment ago, had said there were no, there was no correspondence.
You're correct, I misspoke, I forgot about those, I apologize.
All right, thank you.
Other questions at this time? Commissioner Talisfor.
Clarification, so, the applicant incorporated many or all of the suggestions from the consulting architect, including the one about a reduction in floor-to-ceiling heights. That's page five of his report, I'm sorry.
The applicant would better be able to speak to that, I'm not sure whether that was fully incorporated or not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
One other question, my understanding is they did not lower that, but we can find that out. But secondly, I understood the, our town architect had suggested that, at least as to a couple of walls that are, there's no indentation or any distinguishing marks on just a solid wall, two stories high, that the architect had suggested something be done with that, and the applicant did not want to do that, is that correct?
It's my understanding that adding the belly band was an attempt at that, but the applicant could speak to that.
Well, let me ask you, since you reviewed it, my understanding was he wanted a setback, so the top, the top floor would not be as, as large as it is. At least on two walls, it is a straight up-and-down two-story, and the architect designed it, suggested an indentation which would reduce the size of the second floor, and would also reduce the visual impact of the second floor. Do you recall that? Or maybe I'm making it up? We can wait for the applicant, that's fine.
I just don't see that as a specific direction, I think he may have brought that up as one of his concerns, but in the specific direction that he gave it, it was not listed.
Other questions at this time? Commissioner Birch.
Can you confirm the two large trees in front of the house are both going to be removed? I'm sorry, can you repeat that? It says that they're proposing that two of the large trees in the front of the house are going to be removed, can you confirm if both trees will be removed?
They are removing the 18-inch cedar, and they will have to remove the, there's an oak tree located in the right-of-way, adjacent to the front, and they are also removing an elm tree, close to the front of the property.
Thank you.
Other questions of the staff at this time? If not, we'll move to the public portion of the public hearing, and invite the applicant, if present, to address the commission. You have five minutes to add to the report. I'd like for you to identify yourself with your address, please.
Okay, my name is Alan Nikita, and I'm the architect of the project, and my address is 236 North Santa Cruz Avenue, Suite 205. And I'd like to use the overhead.
You can also take the mic with you, if you might, if it makes it easier for you.
Okay, no, that's fine, I'm gonna stand here, I'm gonna read something. I would like to hand out, you can pass among you pictures of the neighborhood, doesn't bother you? The owners purchased the property last March with the intention to build a new home to live in and raise their two young, very active boys. The owners each have parents who visit regularly from overseas, and stay for extended periods of time occasionally at the same time, which makes for a busy household. Thus the necessity for a spacious house. In working out the design of the house, the central location of the front oak pushes the buildable area deep into the lot, almost in the middle of the property, and with a young, active family, it was necessary to have plenty of backyard space for recreation, barbecue, games, et cetera. The backyard oak limits the amount of development such as a swimming pool. To save usable yard space, the house took on a compact shape, and eventually the form it is now, without exceeding town requirements for square footage, height, FAR, and setbacks. The owners personally visited the two bordering neighbors and went over the plans with each one of them. The Placer Oaks neighbor requested a second-floor window change that we complied with to their satisfaction. The neighbor's letters are included in the staff report. In addressing the size and bulk comments in the staff report, we'd like to bring up some important points that helps justify our proposal. We are not the largest home in the neighborhood, a recently constructed home at 16863 Leroy Avenue is approximately 4,567 square feet. We are not the largest in FAR, as two homes are .31 each, including the 3,192-square-foot home two houses away. Flat and bulky two-story planes mentioned in the staff report are softened by taking up several of the recommendations from the town's consulting architect. One, a smaller entry porch and lowered roof. Two, using hip roofs, excuse me, using hip roofs places the height emphasis on the roof eve line. Three, a trim banding around the exterior walls of the second-floor window sills, and the use of two shades of color reduces visual height. Fourth, we, we deep-set the garage doors. So continue on, we have recessed windows set in 12-inch thick walls at the front elevation, casting deep shadow lines on the stacked two-story walls. The side yard setback between the house and the adjacent neighbor is 16 feet, and allows for more substantial planning along the two-story wall. The actual space between the two homes is 24 feet, allowing for light and air. The other side yard elevation adjacent to the office parking lot has a step-back second floor over the hip garage roof below, giving the appearance of a smaller house. The two large oaks on the property, front and rear, assist in lessening the scale of the proposed home just by the sheer mass of their canopies. And lastly, as pointed out in the staff report, due to the specific location of the property at the edge of a residential neighborhood and among office and commercial uses, we feel the proposed size and massing is appropriate. And at this point, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Other questions for the applicants? Commissioner Smith.
Thank you for your presentation. I did visit the site, so I'm familiar with what you're talking about, and also the pictures. One of the questions that the staff raised was the screening on the right, as you face the house, on the right side, between the house and the parking lot, and I understand from the staff report that the applicant was not going to add additional screening, and could you explain to me why, what the reasoning is?
We are adding additional screening along that area. I think what she was pointing out, it wasn't as tall as what we have right now, and then maybe if we went over with our landscape architect, we could, we can install some different planting in that area to re-establish something that's, that's looking what's like theirs right now.
Well, my, my question then is, is this something that the applicant is going to do?
Yeah, that's something we would do.
All right, thank you. That's all for now.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have a question, however, it centers, I think, on two walls of the house, and I want to make sure I understand the drawing, and also the comment of our architect. Is it correct that two of the walls, and I'm looking at the elevation on, I don't see a page number on this, your drawings, preliminary plans, two-story residence, I'm looking at the elevation from the street, and the wall to the left appears to be uninterrupted, it is a two-story wall without, it's just a two-story wall, straight up and down, is that correct?
Correct. And that was, and again, that's the front elevation facing Placer Oaks?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the part where, if anybody can see, and I grant you, there's a big tree in front, but I did go through the neighborhood too, and the house, there's a house two stories, two houses down, which, as near as I can tell, has this wall situation too, where there's no indentation, it's just a two-story wall, and because there's no indentation, it makes the wall perhaps bigger than it, than it might. Did the, did the architect suggest to you that you do something to make the second story not so imposing?
I didn't get specific direction as to what to do, as he did in other areas, such as the horizontal banding, handling the hip roofs, or lowering, and re-sizing the front entry porch. There was no exact direction for handling that specific thing, just a comment that would, that it appeared flat and bulky.
There was no discussion then on having less space on the second floor?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the applicant at this time? Commissioner Talisfor.
Right, thank you very much for your report. So, my question for you is, are you familiar with the residential design guidelines? Did you, you must be.
Yeah, I went online and took a look at it.
So, about those vertical walls, what stood out to me immediately from your illustrations and also seeing the, the site, was the fact that these walls are very tall, and they're right next door to a single-story home. And in the design guidelines, we, I'm not sure when the other homes were built, but today, when we have homes that are going from one story to two, then we ask them to be sympathetic, we don't, but the design guidelines refer them to be sensitive to the name, the one-story house, and to set back the second story. And I just wanted to remind you of that, and ask you if, if this were to go back for a redesign, that would be something that this commissioner would emphasize as wanting to have done. So, do you have any comment about that?
Yeah, I took a look at it, and I, with that 16-foot setback between, you know, the property line and the building, it's, it's fairly substantial, you know, and it's something we can handle with planting, and there's enough room in that 16 feet to put, you know, put something large in there to help buffer it. If, if it went back to redesign and I had to step it back, then I'd probably using, be using the remainder of that eight-foot setback, and I'd probably be within eight-foot of my neighbor on the lower floor, and then setback on the second floor.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm looking at our architect's letter, and there were two things there. One is comment on paragraph number seven, is after reviewing the story polls for the project, consider a reduction in the floor-to-ceiling heights. What happened with that suggestion?
We felt what we had was fine.
Okay, and he makes the same kind of comment in three, when he says the size of the house relative to nearby homes is increased through the use of a 10-foot floor-to-ceiling height on the first floor, and nine foot on the second floor. So I assume the same result. You just disagreed with him on those two points.
Yeah, the homeowner really preferred to have those ceiling heights.
Okay, and then the sixth comment he makes is the placement of the trim near the second floor eve line results in awkward proportions for the facade walls, and tends to further emphasize the visual height of the structure. Did you do anything in response to that comment?
I think that's when we went into the hip roofs.
I think he made a separate comment about hip roofs. I think he made a separate comment about hip roofs. Yes, he did. It's paragraph one, "Utilize hip roof forms for all roof elements to place the height emphasis on the roof eve line." That's a different comment than he makes on the one I just previously read to you.
Could you read that one more time, please?
Okay. It's paragraph six, "The placement of the trim near the second floor eve line results in the awkward proportions for the facade walls and tends to further emphasize the visual height of the structure."
Yes. What we had in our, the design that he received was that trim that's sitting on the second floor window sill line. I had placed it about, about two feet higher than it is right now. And he, he, you know, did his redrawing of it. He located in that spot. And that was his solution to maybe breaking up that mass.
And you followed that solution?
Yeah, yeah. I think it's good. I think it has a nice look to it. And that's where the, the two-color scheme would come in. That upper, that upper portion above the banding would be one tone, and then the lower portion would be another tone.
Thank you.
Commissioner Houswa?
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that you're within all the height restrictions and setback limitations, so I'm very, thank you for coming in with a project that, that meets all of those. But if you reviewed the residential design guidelines, you'll know that a lot of, I think what we're struggling with up here is neighborhood compatibility. And to my eyes and driving through the neighborhood and surrounding areas, this does look distinctly different from the immediate neighborhood. And you'll also hopefully remember that there's a very specific definition of immediate neighborhood in that document. So when you talk about a 4,000-square-foot house a couple streets over, that, that doesn't meet the definition of what we consider the immediate neighborhood. So the consulting architect mentioned a couple times the formality of the house, and it seems a very formal house for a very informal neighborhood. So could you maybe talk me through some of the changes you made in this revision to address those comments and how you feel it does or does not fit into the surrounding neighborhood?
Well, I kind of just read through them with my presentation. They were all there. I think what I can comment on to, to what you're saying is that, is that due to the location of the property in that neighborhood, we are at the extreme end of this residential neighborhood. We border a huge parking lot, a huge commercial building that, that anchors it. Across the street, we're going to have a mixed-use development with duplexes and all sorts of things are going to be going on in there. Down the street is a townhouse project that with these, you know, these French-style roofs and kind of a mixed look in there. I think what, what we're in is, we're sort of like in between a rock and a hard place with, with the design. We, we have all these other things going on with the commercial uses, the, the mixed uses. And then we have this, we're boarding a residential area. So I think we may be stretching it a bit on the design issues for the town if we were, you know, smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood, but we're at the edge of a residential neighborhood. There'll never be a house built next to us on that parking lot side. There'll never be anything different other than that mixed-use project across the street. That oak tree will probably be there longer than that house in the front. And then, and the homeowner, in purchasing this property, he's already put up with certain things that he had to live with the property. And now we have the house centered in the middle of the property, kind of a small backyard, can never put a pool back there unless it's a very small one. And, 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 you know, we were struggling with stretching the house out on the property or making it more compact. And so that's, that's the design we ended up with.
Commissioner Talasfor?
Thank you. Well, in considering that, did you consider seller aspect as far?
Pardon me, say that again?
Did you consider designing a seller aspect into the home to, you know, to maintain the square footage that you want, but also at the same time reducing the bulk and mass?
We considered in the very beginning, and then it was discarded. We didn't take it up.
It was what?
Discarded. We didn't take up that idea. But it was considered in the very beginning as, as additional space.
Okay. And then I have one other follow-up question.
And I think, I think part of it was just budgetary reasons of doing a basement.
Okay. So let me ask you, the recommendations from the consulting architect, just so I'm clear about this, he had, he made seven of them. And are you familiar, you're familiar with them?
Right.
Have you incorporated all seven?
I believe I did. Maybe if I could take a look at it.
Page five of his report. Yeah, no, I just want to make sure.
The recommendations? Yeah, I see six of them here. Seven, yeah. I think, yeah, one through six were, were incorporated in the new design of the house. And number seven is what the other commissioner brought up about the two-story, I mean, about the plate heights on the house.
Thank you.
Now, this is a comment when we, when we were gonna keep, when we were gonna take the tree down. So his report is addressing, and that little diagram is, was when we were gonna keep the tree.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm, excuse me, when we're gonna take the tree down. I don't want to confuse it. So in the very beginning, we, we wanted to take the tree down. So we went through the whole thing with the planning department, everything, and finally we decided, okay, that's not going to work. We'll keep the tree. We'll push the house back and we'll go according to the Arborist Report. We'll keep the house 16 feet back from, from the trunk of the tree. So what he's, what he had shown there was planting in that, in that area for the turnaround spot. We would still plant that area out, and we would still provide planting along the side as he has in the diagram.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Looking at the staff report, in particular, page five and its paragraph conclusions and recommendations A, it says in part, "The applicant has revised plans to incorporate the recommendations from the consulting architect, but the residence still appears flat and bulky due to the two-story wall planes throughout." So I take it, this is one of the things you don't agree with the staff on. You're at least unwilling to make any changes to deal with that comment. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, the homeowner felt that the house as it was and, and the, and everything else that was going around it justified keeping it the way it was.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I don't want to be redesigning the home, but I do want to ask you a question about the interior of it, because what we're discussing is whether or not the second floor should be set back. And what I did notice is that it's a very, it's open from the bottom to the top. There's a straight up, very large area. Has the owner, homeowner given any consideration to perhaps the setback from the front, but then to be filling in some of that space that you can, I, I noticed that the spiral staircase goes up and it's all very open there. It looks like there's probably going to be like a railing around. Is that correct with the two wings?
Yeah, that's something that we're under discussion right now about that, in the event that we have to do some reworking of the, of the elevations to, you know, get a more setback look to the house. So that, that would be something we would consider.
You would consider. Thank you.
I think, I think the most important thing in any reworking of the plans is the homeowner really wants to keep the square footage. Anything that we could work out with changing the, the outside shape of the house, I'm sure he'd be willing to do. But the square footage is very important for the amount of space that he needs for his extended family.
Well, I, and I just want to acknowledge that as well. So thank you for saying that, because what I was looking at was the dimensions of the rooms. And I understand why these dimensions are actually on the right side, the wing where the boys and the guests will be. They are not extravagant by any means, but I did see that other room, meaning space inside, and that's why I asked the question. So I, I, I understand what the homeowner is looking for here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the applicant at this point in time? Thank you. So we would offer other members of the public an opportunity to participate in the public hearing if they would like to comment on this particular case. No one's come forward. The applicant would have normally three more minutes to rebut what other people said, but.
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate, we would like to keep our square footage. I know that Marnie was saying, "Well, we're going to the, the planning commission because you're going to have the largest house on the street." And, well, shucks, we almost have the biggest lot on the street, you know? So we felt, we felt right in, in having the square footage and we, we were keeping it, you know? We were nosing up to the, the maximum, but everything was, the FAR was under, you know? We, our setbacks were a little tighter, I mean, you know, more excessive than usual. And we'd be willing to rework the design to handle the massing problems, but we would really want to keep our square footage. And I think that's something that is, we would really hold fast on in, in reworking the plan.
Thank you. Any further questions of the applicant from the commission? If not, thank you very much. We will close the public portion of the public hearing and ask the staff, are there any further comments that you would like to make at this point in time? And then not open the floor to members of the commission for comment, questions, or motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Let me just make a comment. I personally don't have any problem with the size of the home. It's just simply how it's arranged. And I do have a problem with the bulk of the home, and I think the comment of the staff that I previously read, "The residence still appears flat and bulky," is, I'm always correct when I happen to agree with it, but in any event, I agree with it. So when the architect suggests they would be willing to revisit this, but would not like to reduce the size, in essence, that's his problem, because I'm not, I personally would not ask him to reduce the size, but I would, again, personal preference, would ask him to reduce the bulk and the mass. Now, how he does that, of course, is, that's why he's an architect and I'm not. But, so I just want to make it clear that when you look at those walls, and they're just two straight bulky walls, if you can, if, if he could do something with that to break it up, so when you look at that house from the street, it is not so, such a massive structure. That's, personally, that's what I would like to see. So I just share that comment.
Commissioner Seok?
Okay. I'll make a comment, and then if, if anyone disagrees, I'll go ahead and throw a motion out there. I didn't have any specific questions, just because the staff report and all my fellow commissioners asked all the questions that I happen to have. But with regards to the comments made, I will have to agree that, you know, I'm quite sympathetic to your need for square footage. And, and as Commissioner O'Donnell said, if you can design a home that fits the, the criteria that we're looking for, that, and maintain the square footage, then, then certainly that's, that's something that we would all want to endeavor in the next iteration and the next design that you come forward with. But I did want to make a comment to one of your comments about your dilemma with the neighborhood. And I do understand you see it as, because you're at the end, you have more opportunities. And when I went to visit the site, I saw it more as the opposite, as you're the first home, you're the entrance to that neighborhood. And particularly when you look at the design of what the homes across Placer Oaks would look like, it, what struck me, the image on page five of the consulting architect's report is that the width of your home is the same width of the two homes that will be directly across from you. And so when you put all that in together in this combination, and you look at the planes and the, the lack of, the lack of just, just the lack of, it's just one big wall, basically. And so if you can somehow reduce that so that it's more in keeping with the neighborhood, so it doesn't look like a two-story giant box, that is what I would like to see in the next design. And so in keeping with that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we remand the architecture and site application to the DRC for final action with the direction to redesign the residence to better integrate with the existing neighborhood. You heard several comments on, on possible suggestions on doing so, particularly with number seven on consulting architect, but I, I don't want to give any more specific design criteria in the motion itself.
Motion entered by Commissioner Seok. Is there a second? Commissioner Talasfor?
I'll second that. Would the maker of the motion entertain adding on to pay attention to reducing the plate heights?
I believe I said the.
Was that, was that in here?
Yeah, number seven is specifically consulting architect recommendation number seven.
Thank you. Yes, I didn't see that. Thank you. Thank you. Then I, I support the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Seok and a second by Commissioner Talasfor. Other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Talasfor?
Yeah, can I have one more question or a request? When this is redesigned, just for my own interest, and I don't know if anybody, any other commissioner would like to see it, but can you just pass that back before us in some way, either, you know, email it, or I'd just like to see the result. Can we do that in some way?
If that's the commission's prerogative.
Would you like to do that? Yes, we'd like to see that.
It's a reasonable request, I think, just as an informational item.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is electing chair and vice chair for this next year. Annually, the planning commission, by its protocols, elects a chair and a vice chair at a meeting during the month of January. So the acting chair or vice chair, depending upon what you want to see me as, at the moment, there's been debate about what I am at this moment with the staff. Entertain motions for nomination, nominations for the chair. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I will move that the acting chair or the interim chair, as the case may be, be elected as the chair for the, the coming year.
A nomination by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Houswa. Are there other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The new chair would like to nominate Commissioner Smith to be vice chair. It would entertain a second. Commissioner O'Donnell, seconds. Are there other nominations? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six and one, six to one. Okay. Have a. If I can, if the chair can turn the mic on. Report from the Director of County Development?
There's no report this evening.
Are there commission matters from the members of the commission? If not, we stand adjourned.